Hello. And now you're stepping today in caprice. It's too hard to change.
Too hard to handle, huh?
It's too hard to change.
I sit in a building that's 120.
You get past it? Can I get you off the water?
No.
This handle, right?
Yeah, there's a handle on the right.
Obviously. You and I are very close. That's right. Almost on your lap. Can you just pull this a little bit away from that? Okay. Nice, didn't joke.
The kids are so excited.
The boys. I'm singing. Ah, singing.
Sounds like you just drank.
No, I never.
I thought it was a no smoking zone here.
I never drink, Steve. I've been always, yeah, I'm allergic. Is this available?
In Sweden, uh, Fongdale is not all on board, but, but that's application. Really? It's kind of fifty-fifty on a day, it's not a real ownership touch. It's still, say if it happens, it's another couple of years, it could be, uh, not become a deal, so. I mean, I guess it's too much. It feels too, too, too much on the bracket in that area. Something with a mark on the paper, on the newspaper, just, just a little. Or a weaker sort of, uh, the mayor and council have been entertaining, uh, comments from people. They got about less than two dozen.
Exactly.
But they also had a, a formal meeting, I guess, before the planning.
He said he got a letter from work.
There's a general idea. What he proposed was, it's almost like a town, literally, in that development would have connected with municipal. Which is too far from, uh, from the properties. So it would somehow be connected to rural hall, in addition to the retail, the Martin, and stuff like that, so. But I don't know, but I get the impression from the article that the bureaus can't pay adults. That's very difficult for them. They claim that they're paying the utility bills twenty grand on gas and electric. So, uh, they have their business goals. So I don't, I don't know. They say that people really don't come to the market, but they don't mind the little craft place that they had on the second floor. I haven't been here in a while. I've been here once or twice this year. And, and, so, uh, it's, well, it's a fresh market. And off the top of my head, I can't tell you whether the prices that they're, you know, that they're asking for. So, but, and people sometimes will be fresh. Well, yeah.
Okay, question. Anything doing with the?
It's like, uh, so.
Yeah, we'll talk about it later.
All right, so we'll make a motion to go into executive session again.
Well, there's a difference between, right, there's a difference.
Once I've talked.
Between intelligent one way and without.
He can do it. Well, he doesn't want to take it now, because he feels uncomfortable, but he said.
Um.
How is, uh, recognize him. So what's on, I talk, we just.
Okay, that's what I was.
And then we'll call him. But when we talk to Howard, he'll have a. He's considering.
Right, I was just gonna say.
We may talk today about.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
And, uh.
I, yeah, I, I just figured I'd let you know, Dad, do you find any of the?
No, no.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know what, uh, what's gonna happen.
When?
Maybe they'll come here, it'll be better.
Do we have any village green porch?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Tuesday.
I was here this past.
I know, they told me.
Even if there is nothing.
Yeah, I had it down for, then I also looked, and I had it down for next Tuesday.
It is Tuesday.
Yeah, but I also had it down.
With laws coming in, and I just got a report of your guy.
I haven't seen anything.
From Zenith, just got it, yeah.
Actually, why were you just doing with the reminders? Because, you know, I almost forgot about meeting tonight.
Did you get a reminder?
No, I said she's been good with that.
Yeah, yes, she told me.
Because I, I would be home, or I would be at the store buying pants, you know?
Margaret emailed you, right?
Oh, yeah, I got it, no.
Oh.
No, I just say, I was complimenting her and said, but she's been good with that. Usually, especially with these meetings, because it follows my court night, my court day, so. I know my sec, my second court, I have our media, huh? For some reason, I wasn't in that frame of mind.
That's all right. I got here Thursday night, Thursday, Tuesday night, for ZB meeting. Left all my books up. I got here twenty minutes to eight. Fortunately, Mark had just pulled in, so I was starting without.
Except you did, and Richie Miller refused to acknowledge it, called it wasn't his business.
He waited until he was at the bank.
It was advisory. So, on Thursday, I had my court, yes, I had my court, that's usually how I, I remember. But I had in my head, I need to stop.
Well, with the store.
Today, they already got twenty times. So, I went to the store, I got to the office, I said, oh geez, I'm like ahead of schedule, I'm doing well, I get into the office about eight thirty, twenty-nine. Sit down. Oh, God, I'm at a meeting ten minutes ago. Luckily, it was at the bank, it's only down the street from my office. So, but.
I think it's the end of the day, there's so much.
I had, yeah, I had one of those moments today. I invited a friend over to my house for lunch, and I would go to run down to the A and P to pick up some chop, maybe to make hamburgers.
As best as I can.
I have everything in the shopping cart, I go to, I left my wallet home.
I've been there.
I left my wallet home, so, fortunately, I had my cellphone, I called him, and he brought lunch.
I, I think I have to increase the ginkgo or something.
Yeah, like, I got the heat too. It's the heat, yeah, it is.
I have a candy. I do, I, she got six hours.
One minute.
No, it's eight o'clock.
One minute.
I can't believe they spent the money on this.
Just got it.
I had four fourteen today.
Surprised four fourteen they got the gun.
Well, it's good, four fourteen.
You got the contract.
Fourteen minutes at the court.
Yeah, I know.
The second time was faster, I didn't get it on the time.
They said no, but that's.
And he's still pressing around with the residents for the parish.
Your back's more of a bow than yours. Same time.
It is time.
Still a lot.
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll move the minutes of, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand twelve.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, can you just move your microphone, because now the, the AC is behind us, so, thank you. These are going to be the procedure and rules for village board meetings. The board of trustees is going to follow, institute the following procedure. Okay, we will have, we already did the pledge of allegiance in the, uh, minutes, and then we have the mayor's report.
Jerry speaking through the mic.
Now, we're gonna have the mayor's report. There'll be two open portions of a public meeting. First is discuss any questions solely on the agenda resolutions. This is the time to ask any questions on the agenda items. The public discussion on these items will then be closed. When the board considers these resolutions, there'll be no further discussion, no points awarded, points of information, or other interruptions. After the resolutions are approved, there is no further discussion on the resolutions. Prior to the adjournment of a public meeting, uh, meeting, the floor will again be open for public discussion. Each speaker will speak only once for a limited five minutes, and they cannot give those minutes to somebody else. Okay, with that, let me give you the mayor's report. Howie and I had gone to Clarkstown, where their board meeting took up the issue of closing of Samuel Road. I spoke to Alex Romack today. He said after this week, in regard to the closing of Samuel Road, they will put up barriers as a first step to get data regarding the traffic flow. They then will put up barricades to see what that data will show. They had been waiting for the schools to be closed before putting up the barricades and measuring the traffic. We are looking at a few months before they analyze all the data, and they will be with us to review the data and their plans regarding the closing of Samuel Road. And that's what it stands as of today. Okay, there will be two open portions of a public meeting. Yeah, okay. It's a continuation, first one is a continuation of a public hearing on a proposal.
Now, first.
Which one?
Now, first. Versus the open.
It's the open floor of public discussion on the agenda items.
Good evening, Richie Metzenner, eight ten, Chestnut Ridge Road. I just want to be sure I'm clear. Now that I'm up here, I have to speak on each item, or do I wait till you get it to speak on?
Now.
Right now?
Yes.
Are these minutes, and that's fine, are these agendas gonna be available prior to walking in?
They were on the website, they were on the website for a couple of days.
Okay, oh, they're on the website now? Okay, good, okay. All right, I don't know what's going on, but I'll talk first on, um, on number, on number five. When I was here last month, we talked about, uh, the status of the, the final environmental impact. And I believe the, the board was hopeful that it would be ready for this meeting, and I, I don't, I'm presuming it isn't. Because I had also asked if I'd have an opportunity, or the public would have an opportunity, to review it, and could I be notified where it would be available? And I wasn't notified, and I don't know if it is available, so let me ask this first question on, on number five. Is that moving forward, or is it to be adjourned tonight to a future date?
Be adjourned.
All right, so can I conclude then that the final?
Not ready yet.
Okay, and then can I also ask you then, you know, you have my num, my phone number, you have my email, that when it is available, give me this much heads up? All right, yeah, we had decided that, I thought, last month or two. All right, so it's just gonna be adjourned, and there's nothing else to say on that. In terms of number six, my brief reading of it, um, my mind is a little blank on six thirty-three South Passat Road. Pine Hill Court, on the other hand, I recognize, now, is that the, are you appealing because the funds, as of last meeting, that you were hopeful, and the work? That you were hopeful would be done on, on Mr. Sherman's property, is now, looks like it's not going to be done, is that the purpose of this?
No.
Okay, I, I didn't know that.
The last meeting, we were talking about the state work, right?
And the people coming to his property?
Right, that's the one.
That's on.
This is different, this is FEMA.
I, well, I, I thought the other was a DOT, but I know it was, I thought it was FEMA money, and.
No, the other is state money.
Okay, and, and from the resolution, and a little blur up in the back, I, I didn't know what to conclude, that's why I maybe asked these stupid questions. No, we always used to say that, but I asked someone, I've heard some of my time. The other also, I think, has to do with eight Pine Hill Court, I'm, I'm not sure if it's, I, I don't know what it means, so, I don't know. There is something like this, when you don't know something, it's hard to ask intelligent questions. I don't even know what to ask with that resolution.
Just look at it, the whole resolution, you have the whole.
Yeah. Certainly, the drainage work, it goes two places, capital repairs are not covered by highway maintenance agreement. Well, if it's not covered by highway maintenance agreement, wasn't it the DOT? And is that the highway maintenance that we're talking about?
No.
Something's talking to me.
The highway maintenance agreement is the agreement between the village and the town of Ramapo for highway maintenance. And all that says is that the work to be done at those two properties does not fall under the contract, because it's not normal maintenance, it's a capital improvement.
Okay, all right, is that gonna fall under Town of Ramapo's capital money, or the village of Chestnut Ridge?
That's hopefully gonna fall under FEMA money.
And if it doesn't go under FEMA?
The reason FEMA denied was because they believed that the two projects were covered by the Ramapo contract.
As maintenance.
As maintenance, but they're not. And so, that's why we're appealing the FEMA decision, and that's why we have the agreement on the agenda with Ramapo. Ramapo has already approved it, where both parties say these two projects are not maintenance, they're capital, that's all.
I, I understand that, I guess that's the reason for this part, that's why I always have those points of information. All right, I'm almost finished on this. I see someone who's getting back money, it's nothing we can do about that.
It's on the resolution.
Yeah, and. And that's it, and I get a chance to speak again at the, the open later on?
At the end, but not about these.
No, I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
I move, oh, is there anybody else? I'll move to close the public discussion.
I'll second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
So move. Resolution three twelve dash fifty-one, authorizing the hearing, the hearing will commence.
I'll move it, I'll second.
Aye.
No, we can do that, yeah.
We skipped five, Mr. Mayor.
Continuation of public hearing on a proposed local law, entitled local law, amending local law number twenty of nineteen eighty-seven, the zoning law of the village of Chestnut Ridge. They have a new zoning district, they met the zoning map.
All right, I'll move to adjourn this till our next meeting, which will be?
July sixteen, five, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-third?
I got a second.
Nineteen.
Okay. Till July nineteenth.
I'll second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
So move.
I'll, uh, we did six, it's seven.
Twenty twelve dash fifty-two, approving the contract with the town of Ramapo.
I'll move, uh, resolution. Okay.
Contract with the town of Ramapo to determine that two drainage projects, capital, not maintenance, are there.
I'll move two thousand twelve dash fifty-two.
I'll second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twelve dash fifty-three, authorizing the refund of taxes pursuant to the Florida, taxes you already sued.
I'll move two thousand twelve, I have a question.
Do we have the second?
No.
Okay.
My question is, can we petition the sa, the town of Ramapo to reassess the entire town, change the ratio, and then have everybody's assessment where it should be? So that if you change the ratio, nobody's paying any more taxes than they're paying now, the ratio is different, but the assessments are true to what they should be? Can we petition the town?
You sure can, they won't do it.
A hundred percent assessment?
No, I didn't say that. What I said was change the ratio. In other words, let's say you pay fifty cents per thousand, for example. So maybe you'd pay sixty cents per thousand, but your assessment would be down to where it really should be, rather than to pay each of these people all the time individually.
If they reassess, they're gonna be at a hundred percent, they require it to by law. So any reassessment, that's why a local reassessment.
Reassessment a hundred percent would lower me by a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it would equalize, it would equalize, that would be much fairer than it would be.
They tried to do that, what, twelve years ago, they spent billions of dollars.
I tried to do that on a county basis, and each town had a different agenda.
It just seems to me that people are getting advantages that every, that other people are not getting, and it would be fairer to reassess the entire town, that's just my opinion.
That's been the case for years.
Right, all right.
We can always send a letter if that's what you want.
I think we should do that. All right, I'll second. Twenty twelve fifty-three.
Second?
I second.
She's second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
If she has a more huge contract with Florida, I'll cooperate with her.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. When you're talking to it.
If I get any further, I'm having a problem with voice anyway.
Second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
Anyone against the move? Resolution twenty twelve dash fifty-five, approving the abstract of order claims.
Mayor, before we do that one, can we add a resolution, we just received this from Tilcon today? Can we add a resolution, um, authorizing the contract with Tilcon for, uh, repaving, subject to the approval of mayor?
Repaving, no.
Williams Road.
Williams Road.
Is this only for Williams Road?
Should we make this fifty-six, or should we change this?
However you want, you want to make it.
Why don't we put it at the, at the end, so that?
Fifty-six.
Yeah, fifty-six.
All right, but we didn't do fifty-five yet.
This is approving the abstract of ordering claims.
You didn't have all these pages. I'll move two thousand and twelve dash fifty-five, resolve that the fund set forth on page one through four, the abstract, David Juncle, first two thousand and twelve. In the aggregate amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars and seventy-one cents, as submitted by the village treasurer, if you're buy approved.
I'll second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
Anyone against? So move.
Doris, would you care to draft, uh, two thousand twelve dash fifty-six?
Uh, resolve that the proposal submitted by, uh, Tilcon, Tilcon New York Inc. For repaving of Williams Road, if, if I approve, subject to, um, review by the mayor.
I'll move it, I'll second.
Willows, a favor.
Aye.
Okay, this is now the open floor of public discussion.
Uh, mayor, I think the five people here, the ambulance.
Whatever the order, uh, if there is an order, whatever the order, well.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, I hope I'm not, well, dropping the line here, thank you for recognizing us.
Medical attention.
Uh, that's okay. Well, the worst thing would be to get a call right now, you know? Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor, members of the village board, uh, my name is Michael Dahlman, I am the chief of the Vice, uh, Vice Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And I have put a letter together, I see some, most of you have a copy, and we, uh, we are in the process of, um, starting an exciting new project for us. We, uh, the town has agreed to purchase the property next to our existing property, and we are in the planning stages now to, you know, see what we can do with the property to do an expansion. So, uh, my question, or our, our request to you is, if the board would see to it, or could, could see to it, or be so kind to waive all fees associated with the application, building, building permits, that type of stuff.
Doris, is there precedent for that?
We've never, we've never waived them for any others, uh, non-profit, not to the fire department.
Not to the.
Fire department, as my understanding, didn't ask.
Maybe they knew the answer.
All you can do is ask, right?
We've had requests to ask, the board's never, never approved them.
The initial, the initial, uh, application, not expensive. Why don't you explain what the procedure is, Doris, so that?
Well, I think they know the procedure, they've got to go for site plan approval to plan for it.
We, we've met with the CDRC.
Oh, you've met.
We're, we're, we're in the beginning stages, and we asked them the same question. We're, we're, we're in the beginning stages, and we asked them the same questions, and they said, why don't you go to this village board before it all starts, and nobody's confused, or everybody's clear?
Yeah, they, they don't have the authority to waive it.
No, no, they, they wouldn't, they didn't say they, they...
Yeah, no, they know that.
So, that's a...
We have had lots of nonprofits, we have lots of nonprofits in Chestnut Ridge.
Well, but there's only one ambulance corps.
But there's tremendous amount of nonprofits. If you do it for one nonprofit, you have to do it for all nonprofits.
All right, so, let me get this straight. You've gone through to CDRC...
That's correct.
With a, an initial proposal.
Proposal, yeah.
Okay, have they, uh, given you a response?
They liked what we were able to present to them verbatim. We have not had any drawings, or any, any actual side surveys, and that, of that nature. I mean, our next step is to follow the procedure and, and apply to the planning board.
Okay, and just so that, in case people here don't understand what you're looking to do, uh, can you give a...
Oh, yes, of course. While we, uh, the property right next to, north of us is eleven Red Schoolhouse Road. There, currently, there is a single family dwelling on that property. We have three ideas, um, of we, our architect, who we have to meet with next week. So I have not seen anything in, in, why it was not drawing. The favorite of, of the architect and the review board was to leave as much of the structure as it is intact, as to not, uh, and reuse some of the structure. The other...
The existing structure, not the house?
The house. To reuse the, some of the existing house.
Okay.
And then get rid of our existing building. The other proposal was to turn the, uh, our existing building into a garage for three trucks, and then utilize the living, uh, the house quasi as is. And the third one would be to just tear, tear, tear the house down and build a purpose-built structure like the fire department does across the street, or is going to, for an ambulance corps.
Doris, uh, since they are in different zones, uh, are there any zoning regulations that would, uh...
I can answer that.
Need that.
If I may, you want me to?
Sure.
Uh, there is NS zoning and R thirty-five zoning there, and with special permission of the village board, an ambulance corps is allowed to build in that residential zoning.
I believe we, uh, we permit the ambulance corps in votes of, I think it's in our zoning law. We amended it initially, it was only permitted in residential zones, and then, if you recall, for fights, we amended it to permit them to also be in the...
So, no zone changes, is it?
There is no zone.
It's just site plan.
Just a, yeah.
What kind of schedule?
We're, we're a bit under the gun. Uh, we have to, in order to finalize the contract, we have to submit, we have to go through the planning board process with you guys. So Michael Klein, town attorney, at Ramapo, is satisfied that you guys are on board with that.
Thank you.
I think the town is requiring them to apply for the site plan...
Yes.
Before they close on the property. But, uh, it's a done deal as far as the town is concerned.
Yeah, well, I hope so. There's no, there's no fool in there, but thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that? My property, your buts, your yours.
In, in your remarks.
In your five minutes alone.
In your five-minute remarks.
Get to speak once.
You might want to stay...
Red, you get to speak once.
Uh, this is, uh, an agenda item, though.
It's not an agenda item.
Did you say my five minutes?
Yes.
We're going to resurrect, so the only time this was done was on me.
That's why we gave you...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
At the beginning and the end.
We have a little interruption coming again from the audience that...
Fine, we don't want. Thank you very much.
Public participation is not interruption.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor.
It's not due respect, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I don't believe the citizenry has put the focus on... Thank you, sir, for the ambulance corps.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to their five minutes?
No, we didn't open up a public...
We didn't open it up yet.
As I was opening that law.
Okay, this is the upper floor, public discussion?
No.
Anybody signing in, or anyone like that? I'm not going to waste my time on that. Michael, I'm not going to speak on that, because I don't want to use my five minutes. Uh, Richie Metzner, um, thank you. I got this in my tax bill. I thought it was a good idea to revise the people about the website, so she would also take in the opportunity to tell them about the, uh, the strip mall coming in on Schoolhouse Road. A month or so ago, at the budget hearings, we spoke about the fact that you gave one village employee a five-thousand-dollar raise. We're speaking very fast, I didn't intend to. As I recall, Mrs. Olman's explanation of that was because that employee now would be paying for their medical, but previously it was free. Uh, it didn't make much sense. Everybody else got around the two percent raise. Uh, two other employees would also be paying for their medical expense. The five thousand dollars was a fourteen percent raise, and I foiled the documents which show you got a five-thousand-dollar raise, but the additional medical cost that this individual, not that they don't deserve it, was two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. So, the explanation Mrs. Olman gave, um, I don't understand why she gave it. Can anyone, uh, without using my five minutes, can anyone explain that?
We don't want to interrupt your five minutes, so go right ahead.
Uh, we'll save it for the end when you answer all my questions. Uh, also, in terms of, uh, the usage of taxpayer money. Last month, you appointed two alternates in zoning board. In the twenty-five, six, or seven years we had a zoning board, we've never had it, needed an alternate. Uh, it's an additional cost to taxpayers' expense. I did some research, uh, in New York State. I'm sure they're somewhere, but I couldn't find, uh, a municipality or anyone that had a zoning board where they paid alternates. So, uh, I contest that. I also understand that now Mrs. Olman is giving orientation sessions to the zoning board. Uh, I don't know if she's getting paid for it, she may not be. I know Mrs. Olman, uh, does things for free, but there's taxpayer money going also. I was on the zoning board. Some other people on this board might have been. We've never done that. New York State has a planning and zoning where all the orientation for the professionals is available for our people. Mr. Cone, trustee Cone, had a pet project, or a peeve, a long time ago about residents who weren't on a main road, putting their for-sale signs out on a main road. And we have a law, as you know, for sale signs on the property. Uh, although Mr. trustee Cone is on speed dial, Mr. Burns, the three signs that are at the edge of Sephar Lane for Mr. Burns' property has never been addressed. I don't expect anything to be done, but I'm formally asking you to address that, as you have with other people, and have those signs removed, or ask Mr. Burns to remove them. Uh, I'm wondering if there's any status update on the tax-exempt properties of Mr. Gase that when I was a code enforcement officer, I had put back on the tax rolls. Then when my position was abolished, Mr. Gase got his properties back off the tax rolls as agricultural uses in an area where, a zone that he's not allowed. I don't know if anyone's pursued that. Can I get a quick answer, or one when I'm finished? Uh, also, Mr. Gase's properties, which is now the subject of the strip mall for Mr. Bannick, those properties are still off the tax rolls. Uh, your fiduciary responsibilities, abusing my taxpayers' money and everybody else's. As far as I'm concerned, it's not being done properly, properly from my perspective. So I'd like to know if anything's been done about those properties that are also getting an agricultural tax exemption on the Bannick property, or also have been deemed to be hazardous waste sites. I don't get an answer. Another one of Mr. Gase's operations is, so I'm asking the status of the BMW injunction, which has been going on since late two thousand and nine. Uh, I know papers were finally filed. I'd like to know if anything's going to happen. Mr. Gase seems to be getting a lot of special favors from the village. We've also spoken several times. I'm wondering what the status is of the ZBA members getting official email addresses, so people like me don't have to send emails to their personal addresses. At the last month's meeting, you indicated that you were working on it. So, please, when you get their addresses, if you have them already, let me know. Florence has my email address, she can send it to me. I'll pass it on to other people. The Ramapo building inspector, I understand, has been contracted to do our building. It's deja vu all over again. We broke away from Ramapo. I'm wondering what you're paying him, and the fact that you have someone in your village now who's a certified New York State building inspector, uh, who's one of your code enforcement officers, to make use of him. And also, I've applied for the job when it's become open in the last three years, because the people you've been hiring have been leaving. But no, you've now contracted ourselves to Ramapo. So I'm wondering how much he gets paid, at least, and why you're not investigating, using your own people that are right here in your, in your employ. I've been foiling things since two thousand and eight. When I sent in my first foil, Mrs. Olman denied it, and said it wasn't on the proper form. It was later made clear to Mrs. Olman, and she agreed. There is no such thing as a proper form. A written foil request is a written foil request. It has A, B, and C, and that's it. However, I'm getting responses from Mrs. Olman via Mrs. Mandel that...
Richie, your five, your five minutes, please conclude.
I'm not, I really am.
Okay.
And I think you'll agree, I'm not wasting time here.
Go ahead.
I'm getting answers to my foil request referring to my, the date of my foil, and that it's not available. Well, that's, doesn't even tell me what I foiled. As you know, on a day, on any particular date, I might have sent out four or five different foils. Uh, you can, I send you formal forms. You can deny it on that form and send me back, or at least have the courtesy, as some of them are, like when I foil the, the, um, the attorney bills, it says when they're going to be ready. But I'm getting other ones. My foil request of June seventh, um, is not in village records. And I think something has to be done to make that, um, more clear to me...
Thank you.
What they're denying, all right?
Thank you.
And I had some more things about foils and a pig.
You can, uh...
Write it, put it right.
Submit it in writing.
Again? I will.
Thank you.
I will. Now, your turn for some of my answers.
Doris, would you care to, uh, discuss the BMW injunction? Any updates on that?
Uh, yes. Mr. Gase and his tenant have made motions to dismiss our act, which were denied by the court. Uh, we received a decision, I believe, two weeks ago. She strongly recommended to the defendants that they follow normal procedure, and if they have a question about use, they go to the zoning board, as most users do. And, uh, the case, she called for a status conference, uh, probably a briefing conference, a scheduled conference, um, this month.
Okay, should I ask the name of the judge?
This is Judge Jameson.
Jameson, I can...
State Supreme.
Yes.
I'll address, uh, for sale signs, uh, they've been on public roads that are not adjacent, or are on the property involved, and I will, I will look into that. Uh, we, we have a lot of them in the village, and, uh, Schoolhouse Road is not the only area involved.
Yeah, I really want to mention, except it's pretty much overkill, and its other issues regarding that. You say you look into it, I'm happy. Can I get an answer on how much we're paying the building inspector of Ramapo?
Less than we were paying...
Two thousand dollars a month.
No, that's, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, less.
That's twenty-four thousand a year, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. No, it wasn't my question. Stop, wasn't troubling, huh?
That, in all, in all, again, with all due respect to Mr. Metzner's questions, with regard to the, uh, the foil format, if there's a foil that's being denied, I, I, if, in addition to the, the date of the foil that's being denied, if it's no trouble to say your foil dated January seventh, with regard to attorney's fees is hereby denied, your foil dated January seventh, with regard to...
Audio tape.
Pass pack road is being denied. If, if we could just clarify that, again, in instances where there are multiple dates. Okay.
It usually does.
That's, that's fine. With regard to the building department personnel, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
It was a decision made by this board, um, with regard to the employee and the, uh, the salary and the job duties that she was doing. It was our, it was our opinion as a board that, uh, there were certain adjustments that needed to be made. In addition, while, um, we were trying to be, uh, more, let's strike that. As we were, as we were trying to recognize the fact that costs were increasing with the village with regard to health benefits and things of that nature, that was a matter that we needed to address. However, at the same time, um, in fairness to the, to the, uh, to the employee of which you are, of which you are pointing out, the, to equalize the fairness as far as paying for benefits actually would have cost that employee so. In an attempt to try to minimize the, uh, what would have been a drastic salary reduction, again, it was a, it was a, uh, decision that this board made out of fairness to the employee and in recognition of the, of the duties that she, and responsibilities that she has to proceed the way we did.
And I think Mr. Metzner should be very happy that we are considering the Village Green project, because then all of those, all of that property will be back on the tax rolls. He should be very happy that that's happening on that piece of property, young Mr. Gase.
I am happy, except it should be on the tax rolls now.
With regard to the zoning board alternates, um, I believe that there too, this board relied upon a request from the zoning board chairman, that he said there was a need to do this. We give deference to the chairman in that he's, uh, he's trying to run a board. He was having problems as far as attendance was concerned. However, um, that should no longer be an issue. If he's still having a problem with attendance, with alternates, whatever the case may be, obviously, the chairman knows he needs to speak to his members about being a little bit more conscientious as far as attending meetings are concerned. But again, we gave due difference to the chairman with his request, and there too. He's running a board, and, um, this board felt that the chairman has not, um, has not come to us on a willy-nilly type of basis, and this was a request that we considered, and it seemed reasonable. And, uh, that is why we proceeded with, um, addressing his need for alternates and granting him that, uh, and granting him that, uh, request. And, uh, as far as the tax-exempt properties, I don't know, is, uh, is there any...
I don't know, which, nothing's been done to present.
And that, as far as the hazardous nature of the properties with regard to, to, uh, to Village Green, if there is any type of potential for hazardous, or there has been hazardous, that is something that the applicant has been and continues to address. And you will see throughout the continued process with regard to the environmental impact statement that, um, if there is an environmental problem, the applicant is going to have to address it. Again, since the application is still a work in progress, there are intermittent, um, studies, inspections, what have you, with regard to the history on the property, the potential environmental, uh, negative issues on the property, and that will be addressed accordingly with regard to, uh, to a final environmental impact statement. By my count, I believe, Mr. Metzner, we, we addressed, I believe there were eight or nine items. I didn't, I was trying to keep track as you, as you were going.
I think we did all of them.
If I left one out, I apologize.
More than I could expect.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your voice.
Al Shonan, A P I N O Court, Village Chestnut Ridge. Let me first address, Mr. Presley, you just, um, was talking about the hazardous waste on the, the property over on the Schoolhouse Road. And I specifically stood here and asked that question. Would it be addressed when they, when Mr. Bannick was here? And... And there was no answer then. Would it be in the final draft, which we haven't seen? It's been a known hazardous area for quite some time. They put it in their preliminary. They didn't even tell us what the hazardous materials were. I mean, I have some knowledge of it because I, uh, on the ZBA, we had gotten a, uh, readout of that area. And there was some very dangerous chemicals that were stored there. It was a dump site prior, years ago. Material there, uh, we also know that that's the head part of the headwaters of the Pascake, uh, river stream. Uh, Corps of Army Engineers has designated certain areas of it as a wetland. When I asked those simple questions and they had letters that were over a year old, were they being addressed, that they had responses? The answers were no. So, I'm just saying, I'm not quite sure that their final draft would be complete because they don't have to remove the material, they're just telling you it's there. I think that we, it's still gonna be a problem, no matter what. So I'm just stating that. Mr. Mayor, thirty-third time I've spoken about the backyard.
Did anybody speak to you?
No. You, if you have knowledge of it, why not share? It's, it's a village responsibility, Mr. Presti. I've, I've passed meeting and said it, it's a village problem, we'll resolve it. You have information, I've been asking for it, let me have part of it. The Mr., I tried getting ahold of whoever this Mr. Santana was. I couldn't get a response. I can't get the gentleman who was the engineer, I, I don't get any responses in that anymore. The only one I got a response from was a lady called Kristen Cotton, who was, uh, in their real estate division, uh, and, uh, said, you know, "We're gonna send you a check." And I said, you know, I, I said under protest about them taking part in my property on a, uh, a temporary lease. But I said, "What are you gonna do?" She goes, "I don't know." She said, "They just said..." I said, "Well, isn't there a plan? Why are they taking the property? What are the final..." No one knows. Do you know?
William.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, is, is there some knowledge that you can partake so that I would have some information to say, "This is gonna be done."
Finish speaking of William.
That's, that's all I wanna know. If you have knowledge, why, I haven't gotten that knowledge. It's, it's been one full month, then you called me and nothing has happened. Well, that's, that's something else, it's, it's a long time.
Alright, as far as the final impact statement is concerned, they will do what they have to do. And if there is hazardous, just like in the park, when we built the park, and there was hazardous material in the ground, and we had to take care of it. If somebody is building a project, they have to take care of it in the way that, that's deemed legal. There's no such thing as getting away with not doing it.
No. But here's the question. And what happens, what happens if Vannick doesn't build and it's still there? I'm, I'm just saying, it's still there.
Vannick is going to build. Let's, let's, the, uh, let's take it to where it's gonna be. Vannick is going to build. The property will be clean. That's what I'm saying.
That, that's the plan.
Do you know about the second part?
Mr. Mayor, before we go, may I, may I address also Mr. Sherman's comment? Sounds like you really have two questions. Is the property gonna be cleaned if Vannick doesn't clean it? And then what is, is Vannick gonna clean it? As a practical matter, I can't speak for Vannick's lender. But as a practical matter, if he's borrowing money, that property's gonna have to be cleaned. He's gonna do his full environmental impact. He's gonna do a full Phase 1, 2, however, whatever he needs to do. And before the lender lends him dollar one, he's gonna make sure that that property is cleaned up to the standard of, for which he is building. He may just have to cap. He may, depending on, on the standard that he's gonna be held to, he will have to meet it before his lender agrees to giving him any money. So that property will, any hazardous waste that's there will be addressed. If it, if it's not done for us, it's gonna be done for his lender, or else he's not gonna get a dollar. That's almost as sure as the sun will rise in the morning. Though obviously, I can't guarantee that. Next question. If for some reason Vannick does not build there and that property again lays fallow, if there's hazardous waste there, as the law, as I understand it to be, it becomes the owner's responsibility, whether it's the previous, the last known owner, the previous owner before that, whatever the case may be. However, if any development will happen on that property, it will be cleaned up. Now, the key is, well, what if it's another, what if it's another ten years? It may be ten years, unfortunately, until it gets cleaned up. But as long as that property gets developed and built upon, it will have to be cleaned up. So, is it long term? Yes. But it's something at least that we know is gonna be done. And, and again, I'm, I'm not making you any promises, that's just the law. It's just that we'd like to see it done maybe sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on Village Green.
As far as, we're talking about...
I think torching to the mic.
Have a little trouble, my voice, so... Brian Darrow.
No.
It was.
Brian Darrow.
He ensured us, right? That they were coming over to see you, alright? And they were gonna tell you exactly what they were gonna do. And they were sure that we're gonna satisfy you. Now, Brian retired. We knew that, he's retired.
Yeah, it's the first of the month, he retired.
He assigned someone else to make sure that he came over and they covered every single problem that you had. That's exactly what they said to us. So, but don't wait for a meeting to go back and say, "Nobody came back." So we can call and try to push it. You know, we don't know that, they, they...
I'm just saying, there's no, no contact. Do you have any information that, sorry?
No, they were, they were gonna go over, it's, uh, eye to my eye.
This is a village problem, this is, this... The village doesn't know what they're gonna do?
They're putting it that way. They know what they're gonna do. They know what, how they're gonna help you. And how they're gonna do it in your problem.
So, Paul, make sure that they get...
Okay, if you find out. Okay, but I'm still, I'm still in the dark. You know, everybody says they will, they will, you know, they're gonna let contracts.
Brian, I already said he was gonna do it.
Case back.
The project hasn't even been out to bid yet.
What?
No.
Project hasn't gone out to bid yet. It's gonna go out next month.
Jerry, why don't you just... See if, uh, you can get an update.
Yeah, certainly, just a second.
If it's going out to bid, they know what they're gonna do, which means that if we call them and try and get somebody over to you, they know what they're gonna do. And they should be able to tell you.
We'll see if we can get an updated information to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, again, if I may, instead of going through third, plain telephone. Now, apparently, in explaining what perhaps, I wasn't at that meeting. In explaining what perhaps was at that meeting, and with the possibility of the list not being complete that they did talk about, my suggestion would be, Mr. Mayor, maybe if, if, maybe within, maybe by Monday, if you can give Mr. Sherman the new contact person. And, Mr. Sherman, call that person directly. If you get the bum's rush from that person on Monday, then call us back immediately. Don't, don't wait for the next, our next meeting, and then we'll try to work it that way. I, I personally would prefer that you hear from the, from the horse's mouth exactly what's going on, as opposed to what's being relayed to us through, through third parties.
But even, even if, if we call them, the only thing we're gonna ask is that they contact Mr. Sherman so that he can directly get the information. We're not gonna give him information that we didn't.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. But I'm just, what I'm just saying is have Mr. Sherman call them directly. I would rather do it that way, as opposed to us relating to you what they told us.
Do we know to Brian's...
Give us till Monday, on that.
Mr. Mayor, do we know?
I'll say tomorrow, but I, I think that's not fair to the staff, at least.
Do we have the name?
Yes.
I'm told.
We have name, we have...
Alright, so then, I'll give it to Mr. Sherman.
By Monday?
I don't know, Monday, we'll see, who says we'll get him.
Well, when if, well, at least the name and a contact number and name, this way.
We'll give that to you Monday.
Don't shoot the messenger.
I'll be back.
I said, "Don't wait until, don't wait until the public meeting." But hopefully by Monday, they'll have a name and a number for you.
Because this is dragged on, I promise, we'll see, we'll do it.
But all your time is up.
No, I'm just saying, we know that. But this has been a long time.
I understand we have a new building inspector. We've gone back to Ramapo. Now it seems like we're initiating Ramapo's five-minute rule that cut the public off.
No.
Jerry, don't...
No one lets you talk, Mr. Mayor. No one lets the mayor.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry, you're taking your time. Your valuable time.
Howie, I hope you stop my clock. So, look, we became a village to hear from the public and to give the public a chance to talk because we weren't being heard by Ramapo. Now, I can understand if you have a room full of people, a big agenda, that you initiate your five-minute rule so everybody has their chance to speak. But when you have two or three people that wanna speak, and you have Mr. Sherman here, who has had a problem that none of us should have to live with. He's constantly getting flooded. For years, he's been here. And you tell him his five minutes are up? I think that's a lot of nerve. His problem should have been taken care of years ago. He's a resident, it's a major problem. It's the type of problem that only government can solve. His five minutes should not be up. I mean, solve it. Also, we were promised minutes would start to be brought up to date, especially the zoning board. And I'm still upset that the zoning board has two alternates. And I will always be upset that taxpayer money is being spent that way. Now, the zoning board met eight out of twelve times last year. It's a seven-member board. This month, the chairman called the meeting just to approve the August, September, and October 2011 minutes. That's eight, nine months late. The alternates didn't help. He didn't have a quorum for the October minutes because the members are still not showing, even when it's a special meeting just to approve minutes. So throwing money in, throwing alternates in, is not gonna solve your problem. I mean, what happened to interviewing people and telling them, "If you wanna serve on a board, you have a commitment to the community." And we understand that, that things come up. But if they keep coming up, I mean, some of the board members haven't shown up, shown up in a couple of months. How are they gonna approve these minutes? And why these minutes are so far out still? It, it, it's horrible. And, and, and then you're gonna have to see which members are here, which alternates were there to approve future minutes. Crazy situation you create. And, you know, like you said before, you try to be fiscally responsible with what you did with the zoning board, it's not. Now, I'd like to know with these courses, they're getting courses. When did we ever have courses? The only time I remember courses is when we first formed the village. And none of us had a clue of what we were doing. So I think it was Jean Greenblatt held some courses. But in twenty-some odd years, I don't remember a new member having a course. And are we paying for this also? Sam, is it, you wanna answer that now?
Yes, we're not.
We're not paying for it?
So don't even, it's, it's a point. So don't, I, I don't wanna, I'll, I'll, I'll address it, and I'll address it more at length. I don't want you to, I don't wanna cut you off, but I'll, I'll address it.
Okay. I'm glad to hear it, I'm glad. Also, if we're gonna do these refresher courses, 'cause I sat at the zoning board meeting, I found it very informative. I think we should open a bindin'. As long as it not costing us anything. I'm, I'm getting tired of complaining. We took a trip out to one property and the garbage that I was complaining about, Mr. Mayor, for two years finally got picked up. Now I'm complaining about trucks being parked on the front lawn where the front lawn was paved. It wasn't really paved, but a hard surface was put down, the grass was removed. And I asked code enforcement, "When is the grass gonna be replaced?" I asked Herb Marshall, "When is the grass gonna be replaced to the front lawn?" He said, "It's not." "Why does it have to be?" He said, "They threw branches in there so nobody could park there." Well, a week later, because it's landscape trucks being parked there, the landscapers moved the branches and they're parking there again.
What's the...
You should know. It's a complaint, ongoing complaint, I believe it's 109...
Seven?
Seven? 107. But, you know, enough is enough. The houses, those, that group between the dumpster overflowing, the garbage out on the road, the trucks being parked on the front lawn. And all I hear is, "Things are gonna get better." And I ask, "When?" Because I'm complaining about the same things for two years, it's time. I mean, Herb said he's in the middle of discussing. And my answer to him was, "I don't think there's a party at the other end of your discussion because nobody's listening to you." And it's something, these properties have to be cleaned up. And I have no idea what's doing in the rest of our village. I'm sure it's not in good shape. It's taking two years to get absolutely nowhere. There's contractors' trucks all over the property, garbage all over the property, parking on the front lawn. And I don't know why that front lawn can't be reseeded and put back from, from a hard surface, so that people won't park there. And then the property next door, they put up a fence in the front yard to hide the dumpster, but the fence isn't high enough to hide the dumpster. And there's an opening in the fence that people use now for the entrance and exit. And it's an illegal entrance to a county road. They just ban the new entrance to the county road. But I was told they're gonna put a gate on it. I'm sure within the next year or so, I might see a gate. It's, things are taking too long.
That's basically it. Get some answers.
Anyone else?
Give them some answers.
Mr. Mayor, before you close, I, I, I want to respond to Mr. LeDun. With regard to, working backwards, um, with regard to the continuing education for the zoning board members. When I was on, I remember on the planning board myself too, in addition to receiving the county planning updates with regard to education, and I remember a blurb not too long back that they also looked for four hours a year for the local, which the zoning board attorney provided to the zoning board members at the request of the zoning board chairman, at no additional cost to the village in that. The village attorney, the village attorney, zoning board attorney, provided that four-hour continuing education to the board as a courtesy and at the request of the zoning board chairman. So there was no cost to that other than the members' investment in time at that meeting. Again, bottom line, it did not cost the borough, the village, anything extra with regard to that education. But again, in addition to the county certification, there is a four-hour continuing education requirement that they like to see. The planning board can do the same thing if they, if they want it by going through... The planning board can do the same thing if they want it by going through the staff. So it's not limited to just the zoning board.
I believe that the zoning board members have also been going for their certification, and that's a county...
That's on the county level.
Yeah, that's on a county level, and that's usually ongoing.
And the four new members, of course, can't go for certification, so they came in with zone knowledge whatsoever because the certification courses are only given twice a year. So they will go and fall probably what they're given.
Yeah, with regard to the ZBA alternates, I don't want to, I don't want to beat you...
Just going to quickly get on to that. I also had made a suggestion, and I said that it was very informative and was refreshing to get across. Why aren't all board members invited so we don't have to do it on an individual basis?
It actually, I don't think, isn't a bad idea, and perhaps it's something...
If you're interested in zone, we're only going to cover the zoning board authority. We're not doing the planning board.
Actually, Mr. Miller asked that at the next meeting or following meeting, if you could review the full process that an applicant has to go through.
But the process that the applicant goes through, but not the kinds of things that the planning board, you know, the information that the planning board looks at. We're not going into in depth what the planning board does other than to talk about site plans and subdivisions generally. But if the planning board wants training, you know, all they have to do is ask.
There's no harm...
I'm sure they won't ask for extra meetings to go through.
There's no, there's no harm if that's something that the planning board wants, and if there's a way to somehow combine it with the zoning board, that's fine. It could be also a two-prong in that the first hour is, might be for a planning board, the second hour for zoning board, and then maybe a third hour for all two or something. I'm just, I'm just, but that's something that isn't, there's no harm to that. With regard to the zoning board alternates, we're kind of with a chicken and the egg situation in that if there's a problem with attendance, we have to try to address it. The hope is that now that we have alternates, that we're not going to have this problem. Is there still going to be a problem perhaps with the quorum approving minutes and things of that nature because there weren't enough people? That very well may be the case, and the board will have to, the board will have to deal with that accordingly. But the hope is that as time progresses, that will no longer be a problem because now there will always be a full complement, and that will not be a situation that the zoning board will be in. That is the hope. Can we guarantee that? We cannot. That is the hope. If, within six months, a year, it's not working, well then perhaps we have to revisit it, and we have to have a little talk with the board chairman or the board members to say, you know, we have to, we need to get a better commitment from you folks. But again, in deference to the zoning board chairman, this was a need he felt needed to be addressed, and we gave him that deference. Now, as far as your Ramapo rule, I believe, and it's not, I don't believe it's insulting in any way, shape, or form. I believe what this board is trying to do is, we're trying to get, or we continue to receive public input. However, we try to receive that public input in a respectful and a controlled atmosphere and environment. And that is why I believe in discussing the rules of the meeting, that we came to decide on the five minutes. We're not trying to withhold, we're not trying to avoid public discussion by any way. What we're trying to do is control it, we're trying to do it, control it, and I say in a positive way, in that it's productive and it's respectful. That's all. We're not trying to prohibit anybody from speaking, and I believe even when we've tried in the past to limit discussion, it's been apparent, if it's something that still wasn't addressed, we didn't drop it. We didn't say, your time is up. We continue with it, and we're not looking to turn our back on it because you lose your five minutes. We're going to address it, but I believe it's a two-way street. You want respect from us, I believe the board is entitled to respect from the public, and that's all we're looking to do. That's all we're looking to do.
I would like to address the minutes issue that you brought up. I agree with you, the minutes should certainly have been more up-to-date than they are, but I'm happy to see that at least minutes are going to be available that weren't available before, and I hope that within the next year they catch up to everything. I agree with you that there should be, a seven-member board should have, at least have enough per quorum for minutes, I agree with you. If there was personnel problems, we will take it up. As far as the trucks on the front lawn on Old Knighve Turnpike and the garbage and the hard surface and the fence used as an entrance, I know that you complained about it, but I too, as of, well, not in tomorrow, but as of Monday, I will take that up personally to try and make sure something gets done. And as far as using the building inspector from Ramapo, at this point, that seemed a very precious thing to do, but that doesn't mean it's going to last forever. Also about, I'd just like to tell you that we are well aware of all of Mr. Sherman's problems. As he said, we've heard it 33 times. Haven't heard it just tonight, and we are trying desperately, now that the state is actually going to do this project, to handle that. And we certainly respect Mr. Sherman and his, and his problems. We never tried to repair them. That's all I would like to say about them.
Now, I, look, I agree with you. It's gone on for a long time. It's going to be of large expense, and Mr. Sherman has been very patient. All I am saying is, he has been very patient, and he has a right to do that, and don't tell him his five minutes are up.
He's been through 33 times already. I think five is enough. All right.
Thank you.
One more second?
Go ahead.
I will take five, I'll just take two.
Joe Mizzola, 16 Anbo Labor Board, Chestnut Ridge. I just have one frustration, and I'm asking the board to possibly help us as a resident and an employee. We've contacted the state in regards to Chestnut Ridge Road, the condition of it. I've logged 12 different potholes from the 900s all the way to 664, which is the worst on the corner of Chestnut Ridge Road and Scotland Road. Mayor, I'm sure you've hit it many times. I hit it three times a day. It's right next to our associates. It's a crater. It's not even a pothole. There is going to be a head-on accident, I guarantee you, if it's not corrected soon. Many people try to go cross the double yellow lines to avoid the pothole, and if somebody's coming around that blind corner, there's going to be a head-on impact. It's not his, it's a state. It's a state road. Oh, I'm sorry.
You fit, fill potholes on 45?
No.
Just, when you do plowing, I believe?
We just plow, it's no road.
In any event, before I run out of time, I would like the board to address the condition of Chestnut Ridge Road. It is the main thoroughfare through our village, and it's atrocious. I mean, I patrol and investigate all the site plans on that road, and I will, could give you a dozen addresses that need to be addressed. They're getting serious, and many residents complain, or the staff and I have reported it, what, forms three, four, five times? A dozen times? We gave up. So if maybe the mayor, or the attorney, or someone could contact the state, you know, I feel we deserve the respect to at least come out and fill some of our potholes. I can understand that they need to be repaved, but it's really trashed. And as I said, it's not just one or two areas, there's over a dozen areas that should be addressed. I have the addresses that have been reported, and yet it's now the end of June, and there's still no highway. Brian Clark, I believe Florence has called Mary Jo Russo's office. We've, how many different people have we called? I mean, Barbara has given up.
We just reported it again the other day, too.
I mean, it's a dozen times, so it's not like the staff is neglecting it. We need some power or some help from the board because obviously the staff is being ignored. And as a resident and employee, it's really, really bad. That's all I'd say.
Sorry. Jerry? Regarding this, it's one thing, first, it has to be recorded. That takes the liability off the person who goes...
It's just nothing's happening. Record of blame.
Record. And when it's not, when there's no action to remediate the problem, I think our board has to, number one, send out, send out a letter, and then talk to the people, our state representatives, to see what can be done to fill potholes. I mean, Joe brings up a, an important issue, and when nothing has been happening over a period of time, we have to get involved in it, and we will.
I also think that when you put something in writing as a...
Prior notice.
Yeah, as prior notice, that you will get more response. This is your notice, that this is done, you are now responsive.
Joe, they had, they had that notice.
In writing.
Yeah. All of our complaints go in in writing, so...
They go in a phone call, amen, right?
That's the first step. But when nothing is happening, then we have to do something as a board, and...
What can we do?
Number one, write to the people who are, write a letter regarding the complaint. Number two, when there's still no complaints, then we have to talk to our state representatives.
Florence, do you send a letter with photographs or just a...
No, I don't have photographs.
I can take them, I mean, it would be fine.
We send a complaint form that was faxed into them, but we've called them too. They say on the telephone, they promise you they're going to do it. We'll get right on it. Yeah, I called even the other day, I called.
You told me with Joe, yeah, that, what's her name, Clark or something, right? Jennifer, her name was Jennifer or something?
Mary Jo Russo, I mean, I don't, we're frustrated as a staff. I don't know what else we can do, and our road is worse and worse. I mean, it's the end of June. You would think, they said it was the weather. It's been beautiful. And they said the road was...
As we speak, so let's put the details in a letter and send it. We'll copy our state representatives and let them know that we're having a problem. Thank you, Joe. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm going to try to keep myself short here. Knutzer, S.A.U.E.R., nine within Skicourt. First, just a comment in terms of the ambulance, in terms of presence, in terms of waiving the fees. I would assume, not being a legal expert here, but you can set a litmus test in terms of, you know, who does, what's the purpose of it, and who does it serve? An emergency service, number one, and number two, the fact that they serve everybody in the village, I think, you know, that should, a litmus test like that, you would not be able to, you would not be forced or feel obligated to grant the same waiver of fees in terms of building permits and so forth to other nonprofit organizations. So that's just, you know, my voice in the whole thing. The other question that you may want to answer later on, how much are the fees that they're looking at? Now, to the issues that I have, I think I'm surprised, or actually saddened, that all the issues that other gentlemen here voiced as well, because I have similar issues, probably less. The first one is, and if you can't even fix potholes on state roads, I said this before a couple of years ago, I think we should put some sidewalks. The roads here are not very safe. Unfortunately, the main thoroughfares, Old Knighve Turnpike, Scotland Hill, Chestnut Ridge, they're all state roads or county roads, so we don't have much say, but if they can't fix a pothole, I guess I'm dreaming. But, you know, I think we need to work a little bit harder with the state and with the town of Ramapo to kind of get together with the other villages as well. I've had many problems in my, on my street, on my court. I've called many times, and I've talked to Herb about too many cars parked. I raised it a couple of years ago. There are other villages around the country, in different states, maybe even in New York, that are imposing one household, one car per household on the street parking only. It can be easily resolved by giving up permits and enforcing it. We had, you know, many, many times, we have, you know, six, seven cars. It was a week ago, my wife put a note, she said, park in front of our property. At least park in front of your property, but the parking lot didn't noise people. And the guy called the police and said she was harassing it. The police officer came, and, you know, we are, you know, we can't even say anything to people because then you're harassing them. It's a growing problem. The police officer told me, he understands, you know, as I'm pathetic, he told me there's a growing problem in this village, in the other villages, and obviously, you know, I think it's going to be spreading if we don't do anything about it. More and more homes are illegal, you know, multifamily dwellings, they rent them out, they move, they can't sell it, and then they rent it out to four, five different families of people, and that's why you've got so many cars. But you can resolve the problem with a one-car permit on the street parking. My second problem is, this is my, one of our bedroom windows, this has been going out for years. Our laws, and I think it applies to some of the towns here in the village, seem to, seem to not have any teeth or any effect. The law here in terms of the litter says, you get a notice 10 days, and then you get back 10 days, then there's a board meeting, then it's 10 days, 30 days to clean up. First-time offense, I think is okay, but if it's a repeat offense, why can't, why can't the law be enacted if you take it then right away? There is a law?
There is, it's just not being enforced.
Okay, so why are those laws not being enforced? You clean them up? And the other thing is, those are dirt bikes. They're noisy, I can't do anything about the noise unless I go invest a couple thousand dollars in special, you know, noise measure. We've got problems in this village in terms of how, you know, it's eroding it. We moved to the village from Spring Valley 12 years ago, and one reason we moved was on, you know, a problem, and it thinks that the previous gentleman here has said about, you know, trying to kind of beautify the village and so forth, and I think we're losing control. I have a neighbor too, have dogs, that's, I have dogs, I clean up after my dogs. The dog litter law does not say anything that you have to clean up, the feces have to your own dog and your own property. And I was told that the, well, the other law, Law 22, the litter law, it states hazardous. To me, it's hazardous when you've got rats running around on the property. I have had rats, I've seen rats, I put out rat poison, they're on that fence, and I've had a dead rat just recently, about a month ago. That's hazardous to me. I was told they can't do anything, then put that in the law, then rewrite and amend the laws, Law 21 and 22, that states that you have to at least clean your dog litter off your property once a week, or at least if it accumulates, or under litter property, law, law whatever 22 it is, that includes dog feces on your property. How can that not be hazardous? On a steamy day like today, you can't go near that fence, you smell it. On a wet day, when it's raining, you can't go outside. I have my back fence, I have my back porch there. You can't sit there, you smell it the day after. We've got to do a little bit better in terms of enforcing our laws. Thank you, Mrs.
As far as cars on the street are concerned, is it legal to park on the street? You can't stop people from parking on a public street. As far as you telling me that you know of illegal multifamily housing on your street, that's something we can do about.
If you can prove it.
There are ways to prove it. The problem is, you have to report it, give us the specific house numbers, give us the specific address.
Have you spoken to Herb about those?
Many, many times. He says to me, he cut me off, he says, those are not illegal unless you can prove they're illegal. I'm going to prove them. I can't walk into that property and open the doors and say who lives here.
Unfortunately, he can't walk into somebody's property either.
But you can make it difficult for them by enacting a law. I'm not saying it's illegal today not to park in the street. It's legal, but we can enact the law that makes it more difficult.
All right.
If you have company, wouldn't you want them to be able to...
Okay, you know what? Yes, you're right. If you have company one day, two days, okay, but those driveways hold four cars. They've got two, three junk cars on those driveways. Take it right up there, they'll park permanently. Take it right up, they don't park permanently.
But nothing is being done, Joe. Did you see, the pictures he showed you, a car's parked on the lawn? And nothing is being done.
It's a trailer, go up there any time of the day.
Is they park there during the day?
Yeah. Unless it was obviously going to work.
We'll look into it. Thank you.
You might want to consider the parking signs like you just authorized, don't want to make a court. Yeah, but then they all line up on one side. Yeah, but, but the no blocking will be in front of your house at least.
And I'm not the only one. I mean, my, there's two other, three other neighbors that have, you know, feel the same way. Problem is, it started with one house, then they moved away, they rented out, started another house, they moved, they couldn't sell it, they're renting it out. And it's a snowball effect. And it's in the, it's not only this village.
I think you, but I personally think you're right about feces should be picked up on people's property.
If it's unstable, you can't enforce it.
I have...
And it's difficult to enforce it, too, to walk around.
Very difficult to enforce.
Have they been issued any summonses by Mr. Marshall?
No, one car, because he was parked too close to the main street, you got to take it.
By the police or...?
By the police. He was able to do something about it because he was parked illegally, because he was right there.
Can I ask one? How many tickets has Herb issued in the last couple of years? Two? More than two? I don't think he's issued more than, more than five. I shouldn't have to boil it, I'm just trying to be, just try to give the board some information. We have a village, and somebody should chat. Because I would say, if it's more than five tickets, I'll be shocked. He likes to sit in the office, and he's a nice guy. I'm not trying to hurt him, but somebody should talk to him. Because he's got to get out there, and he's got to be a little faster. These, these, these problems, once he sees them, to go away within three months.
I have you five minutes. Thank you.
When you leave tonight, just drive up at this hour and stop at Block...
I understand, it's... We will look into it.
There's no law, but we have to enact the law as a village, I think, to make it better and have some bodies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll move that public, the second public session to be closed.
I'll second.
All right, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.